I'd like to call this meeting to order. The mission of the Freehold Township School District is to honor and support every learner every day on the journey to become curious and engaged members of a diverse global community. A notice listing the time, date, and place of this meeting was posted on the public bulletin board of all Freehold Township schools, on the entrance door of the administrative offices of the Board of Education, on the district website, at the office of the Freehold Township Clerk, published in the Asbury Park Press on January 11th, 2025, and sent to the Star Ledger on January 8th, 2025. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I get a roll call? Mrs. Brand, Dr. Casey, Ms. Crosby, Mr. Giorjulo?
Here.
Ms. Lambert?
Here.
Mrs. Speeler?
Here.
Mr. Williams?
Here.
Mrs. O'Sullivan?
Present.
Mr. Amoroso?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Can I get a motion for the approval of the April 29th regular meeting minutes?
No motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, any abstentions?
Any.
Mr. Williams? Can I get a motion for the approval of the April 29th executive session minutes?
Motion.
Second? Okay, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? One abstention.
Two.
Oh, two abstentions, yep. Thank you. Communications?
Communications, we have enrollment. In March of '25, we had 3,422 students. April of '25, we had 3,420 compared to April of '24, we had 3,499, and that is all.
Excellent. Okay. President's remarks. Well, first, I would like to say that this is a joyous meeting because we have reached a memorandum of agreement with the FTEA, and I wanted to say a few things. First, I want to say thank you to Mrs. Lambert, who was our chairwoman, for doing a fantastic job, and I'd like to thank Mrs. O'Sullivan for being on the committee, and Ms. Brethauer and Bob, I'd like to thank you as well. Both of you were really, really there the late nights with us. I know it's never easy, and I appreciate all the extra hard work that you put in, but I am happy to say, and just like I said at my last remarks, that we were, I felt, and I think our team felt, that we were very close to an agreement, and true to our word, it just took that one more session to really, you know, knock out the last few details. And, you know, negotiations are never easy. Both sides always have to make some concessions, but I think this board values its staff. We value our teachers. We value our custodial workers. We're very happy to announce that we do not have to outsource, and that was a decision made by both sides. We came to an agreement where financially, we were able to keep everyone in-house, we were able to make the necessary changes so that our contract was responsible and viable for the next three years, and I think, what was it, midnight when we came to an agreement? Around?
Twelve thirty.
Thirty.
Quarter one.
Who's counting?
Twelve thirty.
Okay.
Twelve twenty-eight.
My wife had long gone to bed. She gave up on me. She's like, he's never coming home, so that was it.
Took him.
That was it. So, yeah, congratulations. So in the coming weeks, you know, we'll be ratifying that. And another congratulations to Kathleen Rosen, who's here. We have a new principal at Erickson. I know I'm preemptively saying that, but I wanted to get that in there early because we're going to actually vote on it tonight, and that's when it's official, but it's a very special occasion when we appoint a new principal, and congratulations to you. And this is Arm, who, yeah, her retirement party soon enough. She's going to be celebrating soon. With that, I will move over to the administrative report.
Good evening. I want to also congratulate Kathleen Rosen, who's been in our district for 23 years as a teacher and as an administrator, as a supervisor and assistant principal, so I am preemptively pre-vote also congratulating you as well, and I'm glad to see some of your colleagues here tonight to support you. End of year is afoot, so there's a lot of activity happening. There's some double activities happening. There are nights where three things are scheduled, so you want to watch your emails and read all of the things coming out of the schools. We have chorus concerts, band concerts, rock concerts, art shows, night of the arts, retirement parties. We have our recognition night for students and retirees, June 3rd, and then we also have two business meetings in June, so it's three Tuesdays. We'll all be together, but at the 3rd, we will all be at the Barcalow School because there'll be hundreds and hundreds of people there. So just wanted to not drop the ball on any of those fun and exciting things, and I do want to congratulate Michelle Lambert, who in the midst of leading our negotiation team, became a grandma last year. Her children, I feel like we birthed a baby. So a little baby boy, and so it was a good week. It's a good week, and that's all I, oh, bullying report. Sorry, always got to rain on the positivity here. We had three cases this time, and two were founded and one was unfounded.
And the board certification?
I, Robert DeVito, School Business Administrator slash Board Secretary, certifies that as of April 30th, 2025, no line item has been over expended in violation of NJAC 6A 23A-16.10C3, and that sufficient funds are available to meet the district's financial obligations for the remainder of the year. That's all.
Excellent. This is the first opportunity for public participation on anything on tonight's agenda. Do we have anybody that wishes to come to the podium on any agenda item? Okay, then I won't read the rest of it.
Easy pass.
Easy.
Personnel.
Personnel, policy, communications. Mrs. Speeler.
Hi, good evening. We did meet tonight briefly. It was me and Dr. Brethauer and Jeff Williams, and we briefly discussed some of the the non-hires back, right? We talked about that.
Renewal process.
Renewal process, and I'm not going to give details about that, no. So, and then also a position that they're looking for, custodial supervisor, so we look forward to maintaining things even better, right? So I'd like to move the following items on the agenda here. Number two, I discussed the committee meeting. Number, what? Number three, thank you. Retirement as listed. Number four, resignations as listed. Number five, new employment as listed. Number six, renewal of non-tenured professional staff as listed. Number seven, contract renewals as listed. Number eight, change of assignment salary adjustment as listed. Number nine, salary adjustment as listed. Number 10, leaves of absence as listed. Number 11, unpaid days as listed. Number 12, affirmed bullying investigation findings as listed. Number 13, student-teacher practicum observation placement as listed. Number 14, affiliation agreement William Patterson University as listed. Number 15, ESY 2025 staff as listed. Number 16, ESY volunteers as listed. Number...
Seventeen's on the bottom, sorry.
Yes, I almost skipped that one, thank you. Number 17, certified substitutes as listed. Number 18, non-certified substitutes as listed. And that's it.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have any questions? Roll call?
Mrs. Brand?
Yes.
Ms. Crosby?
Yes.
Mr. Giorjulo?
Yes.
Mrs. Lambert?
Yes.
Mrs. Speeler?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Amoroso?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Now we can congratulate Kathleen.
Yes, congratulations. Oh, there's no turning back. That's it.
Sucker.
All right. Curriculum Committee, Mrs. Brand.
Yes, the Curriculum Committee did meet this evening in attendance with myself, Emily Crosby, Ellen O'Sullivan, and Mrs. Rebecca Montgomery. We discussed the items on the committee agenda, which was the HIT Tutoring Grant updated, the Wilson Foundations for Third Grade was also reviewed, district goal data were reviewed, testing, state testing updates were reviewed, and information about the state releasing a grant opportunity called Focus Grant, which funds early literacy screening, which we will be going into.
We're applying for that, please?
Excuse me?
We're applying for that.
Yes, we're applying to that grant.
Yeah, okay.
It'll be our next. So I'd like to move the following items. Number three, course reimbursements as listed. Number four, home instructions as listed. And that's all.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have any questions on curriculum? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, motion carries. Finance, facilities, and transportation, Mrs. Lambert.
Good evening. The Finance, Facilities, and Transportation Committee did not meet this evening, so I will move right on to the agenda. I'd like to move item two, Secretary and Treasurer's report. Item three, bills and claims in the amount of $3,589,795.50 approved by me. Travel and related expenses as listed. Transfers as listed. Consultant, and item number six is listed. I'm going to skip item number seven for now. I'd like to move item number eight, nursing services. Item nine, the renewal of the Professional Development Services, RFP for '25 and '26. Item 10, renewal of another RFP for social emotional learning coach as listed. Item 11, cooperative pricing agreement with Camden County Ed Services Commission. Item 12, shared services agreement with Monmouth County Vehicle Wash Facility. Like to move item 13, resolution authorizing the sale and issuance of the bonds in accordance with the referendum. And that is all. I need Neil, if you can move item number seven. I have a conflict, so I can't move it.
You pointed the sponge. You put on this manual.
I'd like to move the following. Number seven, donation as listed, cleared to closed title agency.
Thank you. Clear to closed title agency. We appreciate the donations.
Second on both?
I'll second.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, no. So, on number 10, could you tell me a little bit more, what is the social emotional learning? What do I do?
So we've been working with, to train our, we've been focusing on middle school in restorative practices, and now we've moved into restorative conferences, which allows a process to take place for, it's a process for accepting really what has happened and sort of making restitution for that. So we want to continue that work in the elementary school next year. We were focusing on middle for the last two years, but we find it important to get to the littles and have that work, so that's really, Becky, am I missing anything?
No, it's an extension of the work that we've been doing for the last several years. It's a renewal of that same work, that art.
And expanding it.
What is the, I'm glad you put that up. I didn't know what that was either. What does RFP stand for?
Request for Proposal.
It's a process when we spend a certain kind of money, right?
So, and just this restorative practices, what is that exactly?
So it's a framework for how we deal with student conflict, so along the lines with how we have PBS in place and we employ behaviorists, right? And we're working on the functions of behavior. Additionally, another layer to that is having children sort of be partners in that process and to understand how they might make someone feel. So I read these HIBs and Neil reads these HIBs every month, and you guys get to see this sheet, right, that it's not public, but we need some of our kiddos to sort of have a reflection piece to that and to understand when they say some of those things, how it made someone else feel, and then how they own that and make things better. It's like...
So who is the emotional learning coach?
Right now, it's Alicia Di Lorenzo, who is our coach, and she's been working with, like I said, mostly middle school right now, but we want to move that into elementary, and it's a process because there's layers of training and...
For staff.
For staff, and admins and counselors. And then I think Chris today...
She's like someone who's on assignment, like on retaining.
She's a consultant. Yes, she's an independent person that we hire as a consultant. I think we had a training today, right, Chris? Ms. Clefey? And not to put you on the spot, we had a training today. Social work.
On their role in restorative compensation.
There we go. So it's, really, we're just continuing that work that's ongoing. You're welcome, thanks for asking.
Do we have any other questions? Facilities? Finance? Can board members drive their car through the vehicle wash facility?
Conflict.
If somebody really doesn't get your undercarriage washed, you're going to fuck off the bus. You can have to go to the depot and borrow one of the special passes that we get, like this swipe card, and then we'll take one of the drivers with you.
All right. Mike?
It's really for your, yeah, underneath the car.
Other questions?
I think you don't hear.
Nothing else for finance? Okay. Did we have a second?
We did, Mr. Williams.
Okay, excellent. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed?
Number seven.
One abstention on seven. Okay, moving into old business. I have one item of old business, I guess. It's the superintendent evaluation. You all should have received your email notification that Mr. Dikstein completed his section, and maybe a show of hands, how many people have logged in and started it?
Do, we have a good question.
Call book, Dr. Brethauer.
When is it due? We have a question. When is it due?
I would say I'd like to see them done within a week.
I almost wanted to write one here, but I know you get lists.
That would be the 20th.
No one's looked.
We didn't have much time.
Weekend?
Well, Mike then has to take that, and he's got...
Got to sympathize.
Yeah.
We rice Mr. Dikstein for the next meeting.
Correct.
And so you need that data before then, so you can kind of tell the whole board, this is a synopsis of what everybody thought at the table here, so now you...
So it's really got to be done by this weekend?
Yes.
Because it takes them like a week to 10 days to get it back to you.
I think Todd did his, he promised me he would do his before he left for vacation, but I don't get a notice that he did his, but he said he did it, so actually, there's one hand that is up.
Right.
Whatever.
Has to be this weekend.
All right, so we have to do it by this weekend.
This weekend.
Okay.
Can everybody pull that off?
Yes.
I can. I was actually going to work on it.
All right.
It was on my calendar today.
Because I thought last year we had them done before Memorial Day weekend.
Yes.
It was, it's been on my list.
By the weekend, okay.
So Mike, you didn't put your hands up either, so...
No, no.
You can't go back.
No, no. No, I only got mine just a few questions. I'm not complete either. Okay, I think, do we have any other old business?
The link to get there is in the...
Your New Jersey School Board's login.
Yeah.
Yeah. If you, actually, if you check your regular school email, they gave you a notice and a link, so you can also use that. Okay, any new business? Okay, then we'll go into second president's remarks, which I really have none, so we will go into public participation of any type, and this is your opportunity to address the board. Write your name and address on the sign-in sheet. State your name for the record, and statements are limited to three minutes and should not be abusive, obscene, or defamatory in nature. Do we have anyone that would like to address the board on any matter? Okay. Well...
We forgot to tell Ruha, the new principal, she passed a speech after a fun...
Dispresent the next week.
Makes this all...
We only deal one blow.
Slow and steady, right.
So before I read this, thank you to... So, before I read this, thank you to everyone for coming out, we're going to go into an executive session where we have to exclude the public, but I thank you all for coming out. So, whereas pursuant to NJSA 10:4-12B, the Board of Education may exclude the public from that portion of a public meeting at which the board discusses any of the matters described in NJSA 10:4-12B 1-9. Now, therefore, be it resolved in accordance with the provisions of the Open Public Meeting Act, the Board of Education shall conduct a closed session pursuant to the personnel and legal exceptions prescribed by NJSA 10:4-12 for the purpose of discussing the following matters: personnel, central office administrators' contracts for the year 25, 26, and pending or anticipated contract negotiation, FTEA negotiations. It is anticipated that the length of time of this executive session will be 60 minutes, and that action will not be taken in public after the executive session. Be it further resolved, that said discussion may be disclosed to the public when reasons for discussing and acting upon it in closed session no longer exist. Do I have a second? All those in favor, say aye. Okay, thank you, folks.
Are we discussing the contracts?
What we're going to do is, we're going to do administrators first.
Gotcha, okay, I was just sure, because Neil's not here.
Yeah, yeah. So, we're going to dismiss Diane.